This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:01 PM and I call the meeting to order. The first order of business today is to elect the chairman for the calendar year 2022. Would someone please make a motion to nominate the chairman?
I'd like to motion to nominate the chairman.
Nominated by Sarah Graham. And any seconds? Paul, can you speak up? You're muted.
I'll second it.
Um. Seconded by Paul Aurelia. Um, thank you. The motion has been moved and all in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no.
Who, this is Alien Marsh speaking. Who was the motion for chairman?
Yeah, exactly. I was thinking in my head.
Sarah.
Oh.
I thought it was a motion to elect someone. Now, I guess I thought we now nominate.
Sure. Um, all right. Can I take a motion to nominate the chairman by name?
I second that. William Boyd. Second, sir. Oh.
I, I just want somebody to nominate a name and then somebody else to second it.
I'd like to nominate Brian O'Connor for chairman.
Thank you, Sarah. Any seconds?
I'd like to second that motion.
Brian Sturbe seconds the motion. Paul, you should unmute yourself when you're talking. Um, so the motion was made by Sarah Graham, seconded by Brian Sturbe. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Brian O'Connor is the chairman of the planning commission for the calendar year 2022. Welcome, Brian. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You may now preside over this meeting and take a motion for electing the vice chairman today.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. We're looking for a motion now for the vice chairman.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to nominate William Boyd, vice chairman of planning commission.
We have a second.
I second that. Sarah Graham seconded the nomination for William Boyd. For vice chair.
All right, we'll put that to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, William Boyd. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Congratulations, William.
Thank you.
All right, so moving along, um, we're now going to call our regular planning commission meeting to order. Call it to order at 6:04. The meeting official is now official. Um, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the special meeting on December 7th, 2021. Can I get a motion to approve these? We have a motion from Paul to approve. Can we get a second?
Second, Commissioner Vacca.
Thank you. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Nope, thank you. Uh, so the, uh, we have approved the minutes from December 7th, 2021. All right, moving along, we are now at the, um, next point. Um, the topic here is the zoning referrals to initiate discussion on recreational cannabis regulation. Um, I'd like to just get a motion to, uh, initiate this conversation.
I'd make a motion to initiate the conversation.
Thank you, Paul. Can I get a second?
Second, Commissioner Vacca.
Thank you. Um, at this point, it's gonna be, now it's gonna be open. Can you mute the, uh, the other people? Somebody's on. Yeah, there we go. All right, all right, good. All right, so we, we had a second to initiate the conversation. Um, for the recreational cannabis regulation, that opens up, um, this topic on the agenda for discussion. Um, at this point, I'd like to ask Susmita to, one, um, you know, to, to open up the conversation. And, uh, bring us up to speed on how this, um, first was brought to the agenda. Uh, maybe give some background on, um, this topic. Um, and also just kind of lay out if any, um, time parameters that would be associated with this topic. So, Susmita, you're on, uh, there you go.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, um, so this item was referred, uh, by the zoning commission to the planning commission. Um, sometime in October, I guess. Um, and November, we had a busy month with a lot of items on the agenda and December, we had the commission membership changing. So, um, now that we have new slate of commissioners tonight, uh, this is placed on the agenda back again. Um, I mean, this is placed for the first time on the agenda, but this is a referral from the zoning commission. Um, and this is regarding, uh, an act concerning responsible and equitable regulation of adult use cannabis. That was passed by the state of Connecticut, which became effective July 1st, 2021. According to this legislation, uh, any municipality, um, you know, can have, um, one cannabis facility to every 25,000, uh, people. And that facility could be a cultivator, a production, uh, facility, or, you know, a retailer. There are different types of licenses being provided for those, um, facilities. So based on that ratio, Stratford is allowed to have up to two, uh, because Stratford's population is 52,000 people. And, um, those, um, state of Connecticut will start accepting licenses from individual retailers and interested parties, uh, starting February 3rd. Um, and the timeline is published on their website. They have an intensive, um, list of dates where various kinds of, um, cannabis establishments. Uh, starting from February 3rd, all the way through March 24th in the first round. So if the commission does not take any action tonight and, um, you know, then zoning commission, uh, will have to make a decision without a referral from the planning commission. Uh, and also, uh, if no action is taken by the zoning commission and come February, if the licenses are given, uh, then those facilities are automatically approved if they're allowed in, um, if they're, um, choosing to locate in business zones. Because they're treated like any other business, uh, that is, uh, approved in a business zone. So tonight, uh, you have, uh, three options. Either you can, um, choose to amend the existing medical marijuana regulation, which I sent to you last Fri- uh, last week. Um, along with the attachments, uh, which is section 15B to include recreational cannabis as, um, an additional use that is allowed under that section. Or, um, you may choose to, uh, place a moratorium on this, uh, for the time being and see how this evolves in other towns. And see, um, if, uh, you know, enforcement wise, if there have been any issues and how, um, in general, uh, the reception has been from the general public side. Um, or you can go to as far as banning such facilities in the town of Stratford altogether. But you have to be very cautious when you're banning this because, uh, there are, um, we've been getting so many interested party calls regarding this. And without a legitimate reason, uh, banning such facilities may, uh, perhaps, uh, cause, um, uh, some issues legally. Having said that, the planning commission's advice tonight is only advisory. And no matter what you decide tonight, you're just giving an advice or a recommendation to the zoning commission to make the final decision on that. And once the zoning commission makes a decision, they have to report back, uh, to the state of Connecticut in 14 days. Uh, after which, whatever decision they take, uh, becomes effective. And I think we also have, um, James Alson here tonight, who is with, uh, Stratford's partnership for youth and families and drug-free communities. And he sent a lot of information last Friday that I shared with you all and I invited him to this meeting, Chairman. And if you would like to hear from him, uh, you can, you may ask him to do so.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, James, thank you for, um, dedicating some time to the planning commission and this meeting. Um, we'd absolutely like to hear, uh, your thoughts on this topic and, um, knowledge and, uh, take it into consideration. So, James, you have the floor.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having me. I didn't necessarily prepare anything other than what you have all seen. Um, some of the other kind of regional information that our, uh, other Fairfield communities are doing. Fairfield County communities are doing as well as a bunch of other communities in the state. Um, the decisions that they've made either for, against, or, you know, uh, moratorium. So I, I mean, I'm here to provide any information that you'd like. I don't know if there's any other information. It, it's a massive, uh, bill. I think it's something 300 pages of legalization, just jargon. So there's a whole bunch of information that, you know, whether it be for preventing youth from using adult use or just the municipality, how it affects municipality. So I could do my best to help out if there's any information you'd like.
Sure. Uh, I mean, as a group, if you have a question, just kind of raise your hand and ask the question so we can streamline it and not have everybody talking at, at one time. If you have a question, is, uh, does anybody have any specific questions? William Boyd, you have the floor, please. Yes, thank you. Uh, is, is James, is he the caller? I didn't see a video of him. Is that the person who's the caller?
Come here.
Nope. He's, he does. Yeah, so I read through some of the, uh, moratoriums and different things. The first question is, um, as the position we take as a town, it seems like all of our neighboring towns has either done a moratorium, put it off, staged it. It seems like no one's really pulling the trigger. Are we any kind of, uh, legal, are there any kind of legal ramifications if we do any of the three right now, considering other towns are all pausing on this?
To pause on it? I don't believe so.
Well, moratorium or, or not actually ruling on it, are we running afoul of anything considering other towns are doing the same thing? Can we kind of piggyback on their process?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, not doing anything means that it will be allowed. Um, come February. So that's just something to think of. Um, the moratorium is more, you know, exploratory, wanting to gather more information. Um, I think one of the things to know is just, you know, that there, it will still be allowed in the town, just not the sale of.
Hmm.
Um, and one of the little intricacies of the bill that I saw is that even if the retail sale is not allowed within the town, when we get to the point, delivery service will still be allowed within the town.
Okay, so the, you can consume it as part of law and it can be mail ordered, if you will? I guess that what you're saying?
Yep, correct.
Okay. Okay, well, I mean, fair to say, that's kind of being done now. It's been done for the last 20-plus years. We just didn't know it.
So. Yeah.
Doesn't seem like that's too much of a difference anyway.
Yeah.
Paul, do you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you. James, Paul Aurelia here. How are you?
Good.
So, um, these towns, all the towns that have, uh, have done moratoriums or bans or even approved it. Uh, it occurs to me that, that we should probably be seeking or recommend that, uh, some stakeholder input is, um, gotten on this. Town residents, uh, the school board, the health department, um, you know, social services, that sort of thing. Are other towns that you know, are they, are they, um, especially the ones with the moratoriums? Are they going out and getting information or seeking information from their townspeople as to how they feel about it?
I would believe so. Based on that list and my knowledge, a lot of the communities that have either banned or put the moratorium, they have very active, you know, prevention groups similar to what we're doing. Um, and I'm, I'm not going to try to tell you to go for or against. I have zero interest in that. I just want everybody to have facts before they make a decision. Um, and one of the things that can be done, if I could find it quickly. Um, so the, the bill allows a local referendum on whether or not to allow the sale of marijuana. To qualify for the ballot, 10% of voter, voters must sign a petition. So that's another thing that could be done so that it actually could go to ballot.
I, yeah, I think I read that, but I'm, I'm more, I'm more interested short of referendum. Uh, maybe doing public hearings or asking, particularly asking this, the school, um, you know, the board of education, asking the social services people, asking the, uh, health department, you know, what they, what they think about the ramifications is, you know, what, whether we like it or not, the governor has said it's legal here. Uh, so I think the question isn't even whether we like it or not. It's whether opening a facility in town will have any detrimental effects. And I, I'm, I'm just thinking we should be asking people for that, you know, whether they think that, that that's going to happen or not.
Yeah, I, I'm sure we could do that. I'd be happy to, you know, work to get something like that together.
Okay.
Tammy has her hand up.
Hi, as an alternate, I know.
Go ahead, Tammy.
As an alternate, I know I don't have a vote, but do I have, can I speak and have input?
I believe you could ask, yeah, you could certainly have a question. If you have one for James, then.
No, it was, it's not for James, but I, I do have some input on the subject.
Chairman, she can speak up. She can be part of the discussion. She just cannot vote.
Sure. Go ahead, Tammy.
Well, it's not a question for James, so I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but it is on the subject.
I think she can still speak up because it's not.
We're open to discussion right now, Tammy. So go ahead, go ahead.
I did, I did a lot of reading on it and, you know, I know that the last election was, you know, we're, we're a distressed municipality. We need the tax money and whether or not, like, Stratford has it here, Stratford residents are going to go to Milford and purchase it and give Milford their tax dollars and make that community stronger. Because Milford is going to go recreational legal. And from, from the border, I think there's one four miles away. So it is, it, Stratford residents are going to purchase recreational marijuana and having, I, I think I saw first year, they're expecting one dispensary to do $3 million, which is about $90,000 tax base. So if we let two in, close to $200,000 and by 2026, that will quadruple. So by 2026, we could have a million dollars in tax, uh, money. And again, it's, it's, obviously you'd have to stay away from schools or churches or whatever else areas. But to not do it is, is really a disservice to the taxpayers, in my opinion.
Thanks, Tammy. Um, and not to be contradictory, we have highlighted on here that Milford has a ban imposed on this. Um, just for the record, but it, um, there's no, there's no question that, uh, what's that?
Is that updated? I don't know how current that is. Um, I thought, I thought that they were going to.
Just based on the information we have in front of us, um, but you, you know, there's no question that, um, by having these recreational dispensaries, there's, there's definitely, um, money that's going to, you know, come in. The, you know, there's 3% of, 3% of it will go back to the municipality directly and would go towards, straight, straight towards, um, great programs. There's no question about that. But at the same time, you know, you heard Milford, um, was, was going to go through with it. We have information here that says there's a ban. So going along kind of with what I think everybody, Paul was saying is, maybe.
I was misinformed. I just looked it up. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. Thank you. Uh, so the, I think what the point is, from even what James has said, is that, um, there's a lot of things. There's a, this is very new. There's a lot of topics with it. Um, there's a, there's concerns about schools and, you know, the location. Uh, we certainly need to have more input from, you know, more people, um, whether it's pro or con. And, you know, what the people, the town of Stratford would like. So, um, I guess I have a question for you, James. Uh, as far as the moratoriums, if, you know, I know that you have to put a, a date on how long your moratorium is. Can you, if you, um, put it, put it, you know, let's say six months, would you be able to extend it after six months? If you still haven't had adequate information or had that decision made? Is that something that is, um, is that potentially something you could do?
That, I'm not sure. I could reach out to the communities that have done it for some more information. Um, I'm not sure if there's anything in the, the bill that talks about that.
So, Susmita, do you have any intel on that?
Yeah, I think based on my past experience, uh, working with our local regulations, uh, sometimes we place a moratorium. And if we haven't come to a conclusion yet on that, uh, we seek to extend the moratorium and it's pretty common. Um, so, um, yeah, it is a likely option.
Uh, William Boyd, please. Yes, my other concern, we're a planning commission. I don't really understand the function of the planning commission in, in legislating with zone. Marijuana may or may not be sold in. It seems more of a zoning issue where it's allowed to be sold. Yes, Susmita.
Chairman, can I speak?
Go ahead, Susmita.
So, um, you typically would get zoning referrals from, um, zoning commission to planning commission, not just on this, but any zoning text amendment or map amendment. And in this case, um, uh, the zoning commission is seeking planning commissions advice on, um, impact of those kind of facilities land use wise. Uh, and, you know, but you may not have too much of a say on how the financial impact would be or, um, how the impact would be to, um, youth in general, because this is a land use body, but you could have a say on where they're located and how far they are from, uh, schools and churches or, you know, where people can consume and where they should not be allowed to consume. These are some logistical details that planning should look into. Um, and, um, I also want to let you know that we just, uh, put out an RFP for our POCD process, Plan of Conservation and Development, which is a 10-year document, uh, planning document. Um, if for some reason, um, tonight you don't, um, choose to take a vote on this and you choose a different path, like, or maybe you choose to put a moratorium on this, then perhaps this is something that could be further explored in that POCD process as to, you know, like, uh, Mr. Aurelia has suggested, you know, seeking more public input or stakeholder input on how and where the should be located.
So, uh, and just, just to go along with what Susmita was saying. With that being said, it seemed like it would be a reasonable, I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's okay. It's just, I was just gonna point out. Are we all there? Okay. I was just gonna point out and go along with what Susmita was saying. And at the beginning, it was just to make a recommendation to the zoning. Uh, they, they have a meeting at the end of the month and, you know, it'd be privy that we don't have to make a decision or recommendation. But, you know, as the planning commission, it's been brought to our attention and maybe, um, something that we should consider. Because, again, just to make a recommendation, that's, that's all. And I think, uh, based on the answers Susmita gave us, thank you for that, is maybe we can see the guidelines of how liquor stores are given license in the town to see if we can mirror that somewhat. Because it's too, it's too wide open. As a planning commission, we can only say the land use. But it, you know, it doesn't have too many teeth in that. There's not much area where, where are you going to put them? It can't be standalone. So to me, if we can mirror a lot of some of the policies we legislate around liquor stores, it would probably be a good guideline to start from, to give some idea. Uh, Brian, there we go.
I believe Stratford, as long as you are in a strip mall, there's a certain amount of licenses for the town. But I think if you're in a strip mall, you can put a liquor store. Um, it doesn't have to be a certain amount of feet away or anything of that nature. Um, I, I do have a question. I don't know if it's even appropriate. But, uh, James, what is the liability of these dispensaries for any negative impact? For instance, I know, you know, if I went to the liquor store and bought a pint of vodka and I got in a car accident later on that day, you know, I, you know, the person who is affected by that car accident can sue the liquor store for serving the alcohol. Um, is there a liability in this with these dispensaries in regards to that? Like, what kind of liability do they have and responsibility to the town to do this responsibly?
Uh, not that I know of. And as far as I know, there's, as soon as you leave the liquor store, if you weren't intoxicated when you walked in the liquor store, then you can't sue the liquor store.
Yeah, you can't sue the liquor store.
Oh, well, I know in first of use, too, so.
Yeah, the bar, yes, you can sue the bar, but not the liquor store because they only sold it to you. All right, let's, again, let's get back. Uh, thank you, thank you all. Absolutely. And, um, you, you know, I think, again, continuing, there's a lot of questions and a lot of answers that, that, you know, we would look to professionals to answer these questions and, and, uh, also collectively make a decision on that. So it kind of goes back into the potentially yes, potentially no, which is, like, you know, something that, um, I, I don't think we're prepared to answer the 100% yes today. Um, yeah. Sorry, we have two people. Susmita, first, please.
Yes, uh, Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that, um, if you, uh, I will send this link, um, to your chat boxes too here. But if you type this link, uh, like you can see in this, on the screen, there is this legislation about 303 pages long. And we don't know, I mean, at least as a planner, it is overwhelming for me because I don't know what's in here that could have an adverse impact on the community. Uh, and how the sales tax get, um, sent to the community. And I, I heard that there is a catch in there, but I don't know what the catch is on how the dollars get back to the community. So, um, maybe, you know, the advice could be.
Susmita. It is in one of the documents. I don't remember exactly what it said.
Sorry, Tammy. Susmita, where, where are you done?
No, I was just suggesting that if you choose to approve or provide a favorable recommendation, maybe one of the conditions could be that they, uh, they seek a legal opinion on this, uh, before, you know, they take a favorable, um, decision.
Sure. And, and that's, again, something that, like you said, 300 pages is revolves, requires time. So, uh, we, I, I don't think we're prepared for anything, you know, is, is set in stone today. Nor, nor are we trying to achieve that. We're just trying to make a recommendation on what we think, uh, the next step should be and recommend the zoning. Um, Tammy, did you have something to say? No. Does it, does anybody else have anything to say on this or does anybody want to make a motion? Paul, please.
Well, listen, in lieu of, uh, plus making this information, James' information and what we talked about, I, I don't think we're ready to recommend, uh, a thumbs up or a thumbs down. So I, I think that kind of leaves us at the, um, moratorium stage. So what I'd like to do is to recommend an initial six-month moratorium on, uh, accepting these facilities, uh, to the zoning commission. And with the caveat or recommendation that they seek input from Ja- either James's, a group like James's, uh, Stratford Community Services, the school system, public hearings, that sort of thing. Uh, a little wider. A little wider, uh, net to get opinions from people. Um, and again, mostly to the, what impact is the location of these facilities in our town gonna have? Good or bad? Uh, and I think we'll be in a better, much better position and the zoning commission will have to that to make a decision. So, uh, that was a long-winded motion, but the motion is for a six-month moratorium, to seek more public input, uh, from, from local community groups before moving forward. Okay.
Could I get a second?
Could you make sense out of that?
I second that motion. William Boyd, District Two, seconds that. Paul, motion.
Thank you, well, thank you, William. Um, I'm gonna leave this open to discussion. If anybody else has anything else to, input, if now we're gonna put this to a vote, um, and the vote's going to be to put a six-month moratorium with further investigation, more input from the community. Again, I can't, uh, what Paul said, um, Aileen can keep track of that. Thank you. So I'm gonna go to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is, are there any opposed? Thank you. So unanimously, we're going to move, move forward the six-month moratorium recommendation to the zoning. So getting back to the agenda, um, there's nothing to speak on, on items four, five, six, seven. So we're at eight, which is a more of a, more of a discussion, um, in, in an update than anything. This is an update on the Greenway Complete Streets, um, which, Sismita, if, if you don't mind, I'd like you to touch on that for the group.
Sure. Um, thank you, Chairman. And, um, before I proceed with that, I would like to let everybody know that these Zoom meetings are a little tough. Sometimes it feels like we're all speaking over each other, but the connection lag, uh, you know, makes it, uh, difficult to, um, speak right after somebody else is speaking. So if you can raise your hand, maybe that, you know, we'll have to watch and see who's raising hands and then keep a tab on that. Regarding the Greenway Committee, um, you know, the Greenway Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. It was created, uh, even before, um, I joined office here in twenty eighteen. So the Greenway Committee, um, had always had a liaison from the Planning Commission as a member of, um, the Greenway Committee. For the past, uh, few years, um, you know, the Greenway Committee was first very active reviewing Phase One drawings. Then it became, um, a little silent because we were, uh, seeking input from DOT and the feedback came in late. Uh, and then one of our secretaries, we, um, you know, she, the secretary to the Greenway Committee had to leave. So a lot of changes happened and last year, um, Chairman Watson, uh, the former chairman of Planning Commission, uh, combined both Greenway and Complete Streets Committees into one committee, um, and, um, created new set of bylaws, which is on this webpage here. And I also shared those by email, uh, with this group. And, um, he nominated, uh, numbers, uh, members for this committee. Uh, and we have about nine members right now, I think, and there's one vacancy. So, um, essentially, this is not a body that functions on its own, like any other town committee, uh, like a Parks and Recreation Committee or a School Building Committee. Those are all town, uh, created committees. This committee, um, functions as a sub, a sub-body of the Planning Commission. So the work plan is that because Planning Commission does not have the time to discuss, uh, the details of the drawings, uh, sometimes the agenda is packed with applications and, uh, other items. The intent is that this subcommittee will work, uh, separately and bring back the findings to the Planning Commission so they can make an informed decision. So, um, having said that, uh, since now we have a new slate of commissioners this year, uh, it may be Chairman, you may want to, uh, reach out to the Greenway Committee, um, uh, Chairman right now, who is Harold Watson and, uh, perhaps invite him, uh, to provide an update on, um, what they've been doing over the past year with respect to Greenways and Complete Streets. I have served as a staff, uh, but I think it is worth talking to the members of the committee itself.
Yes, uh, so just to be clear, the, um, this is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. It's a, it's a great group, obviously, um, and we need to, the, with the new elections and everything, there's a little bit of a disconnect that, uh, we have to make sure that there's not, there is no disconnect, it's just a little buffer. So, um, if you don't mind, could you send a formal letter, Sismita, to Harold Watson, asking him to give us an update at our next monthly meeting? And just, we, we'll stay involved in that way, in that fashion for now.
Sure. If this commission, uh, chooses to request me to invite Mr. Watson, um, to provide an update, I will certainly do that.
Okay, um, can we get a motion? Um, do we have a motion or does anybody have any questions for Sismita?
I have a motion to request that he join us next time.
I'm sorry, was someone else talking or was that just the background from you, Sarah?
I'm sorry, that's me talking. That I'd like to motion for her to invite Harold.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, can we get a second, please?
Second, Commissioner Vakola.
Thank you. Um, that's open for discussion. Does anybody else have any input on this topic? No, then we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, unanimously, thank you. Um, so, uh, the next meeting will, Sismita will kindly send a letter to Harold Watson and hopefully we'll have him at our next meeting to discuss, um, the go-forward strategies. So, uh, the next, moving down the agenda, we're at, uh, line nine and the, again, this is more of, it seems to be more of an informative, part of the agenda. It, it goes to, um, talking about the Planning Commission website. And also accompany with the Planning, uh, Conservation Development, the P O C D update. Sismita, if you don't mind, I know you're doing a lot of work tonight, but if you don't mind, can you, um, enlighten us and touch on both of those topics, please?
Sure, um, I don't mind at all because this is my job. So I wanted to, um, show you where all our planning documents and land use applications are on the town webpage because you're all new and sometimes it may so happen that, uh, you may not be able to open your emails to look for information and, um, you still, uh, need to find it ASAP. This is our town of Stratford webpage and if you go to Town Departments and scroll down to Planning and Zoning, just bear with me, you would see the Planning and Zoning webpage with a map on it. And on the right-hand side, um, we have a link called Land Use Meetings. And the first tab here, Land Use Meetings Info Page, you have, you can find all information on all, uh, uh, land use commissions, zoning commission, planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, so if you click on agendas and if you want to know Planning Commission's agenda for this month, we post it here every month. So if you, uh, would like to know if there is a certain item, so if any of your constituents ask you a question and you're not sure if it's on the agenda or not, you may want to direct them to this webpage where they can access this agenda, uh, themselves, or you can look it up for them. And if you would like to look at applications for that month and any other transmittals that I might have sent relating to administrative reviews, it will be part of this, uh, tab called Applications. Go to Planning Commission. Choose the year. And this is where all the information gets posted. So if you would like to view a past recording of a commission meeting or if you would like to see, um, how your meeting went last night and if you're not sure if the decision letter stated exactly what the decision was at the meeting, those are posted too on this under Meeting Recordings. And if you go to twenty twenty-two, um, we just had our zoning commission meeting this year, so that's posted here. But Planning Commissions will also be posted under this after tonight's meeting. If you would like to see twenty twenty-one, everything's posted here. And you can click on that and look at the videos through YouTube. If you would like to know, if you would like to know, um, what are the upcoming meetings for this year? If you're having a scheduling conflict and you would like to be very sure that you're not going to miss the Planning Commission meeting, uh, you may want to click on the land use meeting schedules, go to Planning Commission, and this is this year's calendar of, um, meetings. So everything's online. Uh, basically, uh, we try to put everything online for your convenience. So please, you know, visit our Planning and Zoning webpage. There's also more information on our zoning regulations, subdivision regulations. There's an interactive zoning map if you would like to look up an address and know what zone the property is in. And all our long-range planning documents are under this. This is the existing Plan of Conservation and Development, which will be updated this year. Um, and this is about Stratford Housing Partnership, which was, um, uh, we started, um, functioning since last year or I think it was January last year or, um, twenty twenty, Aileen, correct me, was it twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? Twenty twenty? Okay. Yeah. So if you go here, you can see who the members of the partnership are and all the meeting recordings, agendas, meeting materials and everything related to Stratford Housing Partnership's work. In here, under Current and Recent Planning Projects, now this is where, um, if you would like to know, uh, what our Complete Streets, uh, drawings are, uh, what stage we are in, they're all here, like Phase One drawings, thirty percent, sixty percent and ninety percent designs. They've been currently reviewed by DOT. You may want to click here and look at these drawings to know more. And if you want to know what, uh, Greenway Committee's vision is, you may want to just go back here. And under the Screenways and Pathways, you have the Executive Summary Perimeter Design Report and Pathway Study Plan, Phase Two Implementation are the drawings that are currently being reviewed by DOT. And you may just want to click on this and, um, look at these plans. So this is a lot of information, um, and I don't want to overwhelm you, but I just want to let you know that if you need anything, relating to the Planning Commission or the work we do, it's mostly, you can find it online as well. In my, if I'm not around and you need something very quickly, you can just go to our Planning and Zoning webpage. And the second.
Sorry. No, you need to, we're, we're still on that first topic, William. Do you have a question?
Yes, with that being said, I was wondering if you were gonna note that you are advising us to have a training on February sixteenth for the new commissioners. Sorry, you'll probably get to that.
Yes. So, um, the, now that we are on the topic, there will be a land use commissioner training this year on February sixteenth. Please make yourselves available because per state statute, every commission member must have completed at least four hours of, uh, education on land use related, uh, topics. And this is one such training which will be very beneficial to you because, uh, we've had, uh, the same training done to our past commissioners too. It's about, um, they let you know about what is legal, what is not legal, like ex parte communication, how you deal with site usage, requests from applicants. Can everybody else mute? Okay. So, uh, it's a very, very, um, good, uh, session. And I think our Connecticut chapter of, uh, American Planning Association is also putting together some commissioner, uh, land use training series. As soon as that information becomes available, I will share with you all. And we are going to keep a log of, uh, which commissioner has done what trainings and how many hours because we have to report it back to the state by the end of this year. Um, the second topic we were talking was about, um, RFP for Plan of Conservation and Development. Uh, we, um, prepared this RFP last month, uh, in December and this was advertised in, um, last week of December, just before Christmas. And it's still out there on, um, uh, many websites for consultants to review and, um, offer their solicitations of interest to the town. So, um, we are waiting for those and the deadline is January twenty-fifth to receive them. Following that, uh, we will have a selection, uh, process, uh, with comprised of a selection committee. I'm, uh, my thinking is that I might invite Commission Chair Brian O'Connor uh, because this is one of the primary functions of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is tasked with updating and adopting the Plan of Conservation and Development in a ti- timely manner per state statutes. So I think the chairman has to be part of the selection process and I may also, um, invite some town staff to be part of the selection process. And I'll keep you posted as the process unfolds. Hopefully, a consultant may be, uh, selected by March. You know, we would have executed a contract and entered, um, into an agreement, uh, which is when, uh, the consultant would also be required to attend every Planning Commission meeting to, uh, update the commission on, uh, the findings and the process and, um, any issues that they have faced, uh, while working on this P O C D. They'll be working with you all and updating this P O C D and also with the general public simultaneously.
Thank you. Um, absolutely. So, does anybody have any questions, uh, for Smith about a- any of the, the P O C D or, or anything she just reviewed? No, no questions. That's pretty good. Um, all right, so at this point, we're, we're coming to the end, but, uh, it's our first meeting, so just, I'm not, I'm sure everybody has the schedule, but the next scheduled meeting is on Tuesday, February fifteenth at six PM. That's to be announced, whether it's gonna be, uh, virtual or in person. That's something that we'll have to discuss in the interim and, um, get an idea of what everybody feels comfortable with and, um, see where we're at. Again, Sismita, uh, put it very nicely, but I think it's a very good thing that we, uh, all plan on scheduling ourselves for February sixteenth, the day following. We're gonna get a, uh, full boat of, uh, the Planning Commission and get some training in. Um, we're, everybody's fairly new, um, and, you know, it's, knowledge is power. So let's, um, plan on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'm not su- we don't have a date on that, Sismita, but it's just, uh, a time, I'm sorry. Do you, do you have any idea what time these?
Yeah, it's tentatively scheduled for six thirty PM, so it will be a virtual training session. And, um, it, it's a very good training session because he will give you a case study of a real life example and what would you have done as a commissioner in that situation, which is very, very tricky. Uh, and I think you will enjoy the training and you'll learn a lot from it.
Thank you. Um, so the next point is just to congratulate everybody. You, you know, William Boyd, congratulations on, uh, the vice chair and, um, we'll look, everybody's looking forward to working, you know, with you. And again, um, Paul and Sarah and Alec, congratulations on your election. Tammy Lynn and Brian, look forward to working with you as well. Thanks for your time. And, uh, obviously, Sismita and Aileen, um, there's nothing but positive things I've heard working with you and look forward to working with you, um, in the next few years. And so, you know, And so, you know, at that point, uh, thank you all for um, appointing me as chairman. Um, I look forward to working with you and um, you know, my phone's always on. So please feel free to call me anytime. Um, look forward to just working with you guys. And you know, um, this P O C D is gonna be a big project and um, we're gonna make a mark on history, more or less, for the next ten years anyway. So um, look forward to everybody, uh, work with everybody. Um, and with uh, no further ado, unless anybody, at this point, it's very open for anybody have any comments or anything before we um, close this session? No? All right.
I'd like to say, I thank Brian for taking the chairmanship. And I look forward to all the new people, Paul, Tammy, Brian, Alec and Sarah as well. And thank you. I'm, it's weird, I'm here two years and I'm the senior most person. It's a little weird. So I will promise you, I'm learning as we go along, as you guys are too. There's a lot, a crush of information at times. And in every other town, I've said this in every meeting, every other town I know is planning and zoning. We're the only town that's planning, but then there's, is zoning. So sometimes I get mixed up as to which one we're doing. I'm trying to keep my mind on your planning and I think that training will help us all do that. So thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, William. Um, well, with, with, uh, I guess no further ado, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yes, William Boyd, District Two's first motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second? Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Um, thank you all for your time. Have a great night and look forward.